Okay, we're live and ready to go now.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Board of Education Special Meeting of Milpitas Unified School District, November 30th, 2020. It is now 6:00 PM. Calls meeting to order. Scott, would you help me with the roll copies?
Sure. President Liang.
Here.
Vice President Norwood.
Here.
Board Clerk Gipchuan.
Here.
Board Member Si.
Here.
Board Member No.
Here.
Student Board Rep Stanley.
Here.
Student Board Rep Vasquez. I don't believe she's here.
Okay, that reflects that. We're moving on to item three on the agenda, and it is review and approve the agenda. Is there a superintendent? Do we have any changes on the agenda?
No, we don't.
Okay. Is there a motion to review and approve the agenda?
Motion to approve and review the agenda.
Second.
Kelly, motion. Chris, second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Seeing that, the agenda is approved. Scott, can we get the flag on the screen? All right. Vice President Norwood, since you're the special person, would you please lead us in the bunch of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. To the public, which stands one nation, one God, and for liberty, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, Scott. Thomas from the pocket.
Let's see, we have a hand raised. It is Jacqueline Romero. We're gonna activate her audio. Give us a sec. Okay, Jacqueline Romero, you are up for public comment.
Hello, Board. There's actually two of us here on one line, if that's okay. My daughter's part of the Travel Academy, so she also wanted to speak. Is that okay for us to have two on one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. The reason why I'm reaching out today is because there is a big meeting tomorrow night at the City Council, and they're going to be voting on this to support the Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness. Now, I understand this is two different governances that we have here in the city, and I always hear that's the school board, or oh, that's the City Council. And I also sometimes hear that i- in some people's opinion, that school board has nothing to do with the city, and the city should have nothing to do with the school board. But I beg to differ. I'm here to ask for you to look inside yourselves as a resident of Milpitas, here to represent students and parents in all aspects of education, as well as any other way that you can support the students in having the best education environment. And so with that being said, the McKinney-Vento kids seems to have no solution when it comes to permanent housing. And so we're asking that you reach out on your own time, write an email about asking the City Council to ensure that our McKinney-Vento kids are part of the plan, that they will have some support to get permanent housing. And so that's what we're asking you to do as a representative of the school board, but also as a resident here in Milpitas. Thank you for your time, and I will hand it over to my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michaela Parrish, and I am a part of the leadership team for the Academy of Travel and Tourism. Our senior classes decided that for our senior project, we wanted to help some of our unhoused peers and some of the students in MUSD that are unhoused. So we're trying to raise money to make at least 200 care packages to give to our peers. You should be getting getting an email from one of my peers. I don't know if you got it already, but if you keep an eye out for that, there will be a link for our GoFundMe on there. And if you can please share this on your social platforms, that would be awesome, as we're trying to get the word out and trying to get as much money as possible so we can get some of our get our peers what they need to get through this cold winter. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, got the email.
And if anybody else would like to make a public comment, you just click Raise Your Hand, and then we will call on you in the order. We'll enable your audio like we just did for Jacqueline. And so if anybody right now would like to make a public comment before we move on, I'll give you a few a few seconds to try and click on the Raise Your Hand function, and then we will call on you. And we do have someone who raised their hand. It is Ling Kong. Let's enable her audio. Okay, Ling Kong, you are now ready to go for your public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Fressner. Hello to all the board members. My name is Ling Kong, parent of two students here in Milpitas School District. I also want to add on to the last public comment from Jackie. Tomorrow night, in the Milpitas City Council, item number 10 on the agenda is to adopt a resolution to endorse the 2020 to 2025 Santa Clara County Community Plan to End Homelessness. And I hope that, you know, the board members here will also take a position to support it, because this is really important to make sure that our students here, especially the McKinney-Vento students, will get as much as support as possible, including rent relief and other homeless prevention services that is available from the county. So I urge you to contact the council members to lend your voice in this better. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and that was our last public comment at this time. Oh, wait, hold on one sec. We have one more. Kavita Shridhar, your talking is permitted, and go ahead with your public comment as well.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm just here based on the notification that was sent out. This is with regard to the new pandemic. You know, the restrictions that have been placed on by the county, and I'm assuming that this is with regard to reopening or continuation of services for students. I am speaking as a special education parent, and I would like to request, if it is possible, to please consider during your decision-making today, that there are some students who need the targeted in-person support. And if you're making a decision with regard to either suspending services with regard to that or continuing them, please take into consideration that these students have started to do well and are getting just getting into the routine of, you know, getting back into academic instruction. So we would really, really appreciate it if you could please take that into consideration, especially with regard to vulnerable special education students. Thank you.
Thank you, Kavita.
Thank you, Kavita. And looks like we've got another hand raised. This one is Geeta Singh. Let's enable her audio.
Yeah, so hey, this is Rahul, the husband of Keita Singh.
Oh, there you go.
And we have a special child, and he's in a kindergarten right now, and the support for him is being taken away, and all the assessments that were supposed to be done for him, they most of them haven't been able to were not done just because of the COVID and the special situation that we are dealing with right now. So we just wanted to request that if the school can go ahead with what we have. And also, we can clearly see that he needs an in-person support in the classroom. So yeah, that was our request.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna pause for a second and give anybody else time to raise their hand for a public comment. Okay, President Liang, that's all the public comments so far at the time.
All right, we're moving on to our board group agreements. The board group agreement is on the screen for you to follow right there. One, keep learning and achievement for all students as a primary focus. Two, ask questions for your own understanding. Three, be open and honest to each other. Four, no surprises include unapproved communication with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district order board. Five, be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Six, communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance of the public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Seven, participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Eight, actively support the culture of we in action deed and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Milpitas Unified School District. And this is our special meeting agenda, 7.1 District Response to the Exponential Increase in COVID-19 Cases. Superintendent Jordan.
Thank you, President Liang. I we called our special board meeting to look at the latest directives from the Public Health Department Officer Dr. Sarah Cody in light of the increase in COVID cases and the reduced numbers of hospital beds available for those who are experiencing COVID, as well as other other issues such as the flu. And in looking at our teachers, our team members, we have 33 of them who have students on campus for in-person learning support. The directive from Dr. Cody for those who have traveled either from 150-plus miles away from Santa Clara County to Santa Clara County and or have traveled out and then come back home, that they are supposed to quarantine for two weeks. And this creates opportunity for us to discuss how we can assure that the in-person learning supports provided continue in a way that team members and students know that safe conditions are in place. And the reason that I say it that way is because if we have students whose parents have traveled outside the county, or who have traveled, had visitors who travel in the county, and we end up having a case in one of our learning pods, or one of our teachers who's supporting students in small numbers has a case, then would we be contributing to those numbers of people who might find themselves in need of the hospital? Or should we, in parallel to Dr. Cody's directive, look at just implementing essentially a two-week quarantine for our in-person learning supports? And I've you know, from my own experience, my son, who's in LA, he came home for Thanksgiving. He took a COVID test before arriving home, and it was negative. Had it not been negative, we would have quarantined him in his room for two weeks. Or he may have just stayed in LA. And we don't know that others are doing this, taking the same precautions, and it's just really a matter of ensuring that we that our team members and their families can trust that we are creating safe conditions for teaching and learning and working in Milpitas Unified. So I'd like to put on the table the proposal to consider quarantining our in-person learning supports for two weeks. And if we if in lieu of quarantining, what other options do we have that might assure us that the students who are coming for in-person learning supports, as well as the teachers and team members who are providing it, that they are COVID-free?
Oh, I can speak on this? So thank you for bringing this up, Cheryl. I think as we're moving into, or we are in purple tier, we do do really want to put a focus on safety. And I think we're here in Silicon Valley. This is the perfect time to be innovative and use whatever technology tools we have available, and even look for more technology tools to help track what's going on with COVID, as well as symptoms and quarantine. First off, I'll say I generally am in favor of quarantine. Better safe than sorry. Now, I've been studying a lot of government responses to COVID around the world, and I think one of the best government responses thus far is Taiwan, where they got their new cases very much under control. And one of the ways they did that was just the automatic 14-day in-room quarantine for anyone arriving in Taiwan. And they send someone to check on that person all the time and keep everyone monitored. To that end, I've been hearing from various school nurses that keeping track of you know, students and personnel just reporting any symptoms is very exhausting. And I'm sympathetic for them, because it is a lot of work. I think we could implement some sort of technology tools to keep track of symptoms and how everyone's feeling day by day that can make our quarantine system more targeted and more effective. And I'm happy to talk more about those tools later.
Thank you.
What other members think?
Put in a quick question. Go ahead, man.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'll be here.
Gotcha. Quick question. Do we still have any onsite testing, Superintendent Jordan, in regards to COVID-19?
Yes, we will have onsite testing beginning the week of December 14th for all team members. The quarantine time does put us right up to that week when testing will be available. Otherwise, there is testing available periodically at the Sports Center, as well as every day at the Milpitas Library. And then the Milpitas Fire Department also provides mobile testing.
Thank you. As I believe the results take, what, 48 to 72 hours before getting results back? So is that correct?
It was within a day and a half.
Gotcha. So 36 hours there. When we think about logistics, right, even if we come back to in-person from a safety standpoint, because we are in purple tier, we would ask that everyone go get tested, but self-quarantine until they get the test results back before coming back in person. Logistically, seems like from a timeframe perspective, that we might be better off holding off for the two weeks in a school policy quarantine perspective, until we get to December 14th, when we do have onsite testing and so forth. I know that it's very difficult to ask folks whether their family, students, staff, as far as tell us, you know, did you go, did you travel 150 miles out, you know? And it's a huge debate all day, right? If you listen to the different talk shows and radio shows, they it's very difficult to get folks to say, you know, if you're 151 miles, do you quarantine yourself or not, right? Or if you're 149, do you make that determination determination as far as the distance, right? I think the overall message is that if you traveled outside your household and spent time with with others, well, you should really take precaution and self-quarantine from a safety perspective, because you want to protect others as well.
Chris, you have comment?
Superintendent Jordan, in in the context of this conversation, there's a couple of a couple of different pieces that I heard. I heard the possibility, and please confirm for me, the there's an ask for either we continue what we're doing, or we look at quarantine 14 days per the county order. Is that is that is that a summary?
Yeah, nearing the county order and quarantining for 14 days for in-person learning.
So we have a couple, we have a number of different groups or activities going on in the school district. We have we have our we have our special population. We have our students that are in the learning pods already, or that in the learning pods. And we have teachers that are using their classrooms without students as teaching studios. And we have we have staff on campuses that are that are actually coming to campuses to do their work. So if you could kind of give me a breakdown on who you're referring to in terms of all the groups that may potentially quarantine, that would be helpful.
So it would be those students who are involved in athletic conditioning. It would also be our students who are coming on campus for learning lab support at the secondary level. We have our learning pods, as you mentioned. Our Child Development Center was closed for in-person just before Thanksgiving due to COVID case. And so they haven't returned yet. We have also individual teachers who have one to four or six students that they see each day. We have our community-based instruction class at Milpitas High School for our students with great exceptional neurodiversity needs. We also have get covered on. Yep, I covered them.
Okay. The our our discussion around this this opportunity brought forth by Dr. Cody sharing the data about the number of cases that have been increasing in the county per day. I know that we have a dashboard that you shared or that you create or that the district has created. When was the last time the dashboard was updated?
It should have been updated last week, because since our last board meeting on Tuesday, we've had an additional staff member with COVID.
Is it possible that you bring up the dashboard so that we can look at that?
Yep.
I can do that right now while you guys are checking.
That'd be terrific. Thank you, Scott.
And and then I would also ask, because there's also a report, the data shows that the the transmission of from adult to child and child to child is less than the transmission from adult to adult. Okay, so we're looking at we're looking at our dashboard. So if you could explain it, that'd be great.
The left column is the number of students who are on campus who have been had a report of a positive case. The second column is a number of staff members who are on campus who have a COVID case. And then the next column is where their close contacts who were notified. And then was County Public Health Department notified, and we have to notify the County Public Health Department within four hours of learning of a positive COVID case. And then our liaison does me is Eva Magana, and she does the investigation of that along with our Director of HR, Damon James. And they provide the notifications to team members, as well as parents and students, when they are either close contacts or not necessarily close contacts, but we're in the vicinity of a person with COVID. And Eva let me know, she's in the attendee section, that it has not been updated since November 23rd, and there was a case that we learned of, I think it was on November 24th or 25th.
So if we if we look at the information here, it appears that there's been a trend of since October 18th, at least one report, except well, skipping October, well, I just go for from since November 1st, we've had a trend of a report each week, at least one report somewhere each week since the beginning of November.
Right.
Okay. What's the what's the column, the far column over to the far right? Is that is that us reporting to the county or or teachers that are number of staff tested?
Yeah, once we get our curative on campus the third week of December, then those that column will populate.
Okay. Okay, our and thank you for the development with the team of this dashboard. I know that the county has a more comprehensive dashboard, and I think, I don't know if just a quick, this is a quick side note, because we want this to become a resource for the district as well. But is is there does the, we call it the county dashboard, comes in multiple languages, so that it does? Okay. Okay.
And also on that same page that Scott was showing us, we have links to it.
Links to the county? Okay, yeah, because it's one thing to look at the county data, which is maybe we may be a microcosm of it, but I want to make sure that what we show is relative to the district, because it also shows the safety precautions that have been taken thus far in order to keep our the the staff, meaning the teachers classified and everyone else safe in the discussion. Final question, what has been the the feedback, or has there been any feedback from the teachers that are doing in-person at this point? Because the reality is, I know that we are in the purple tier. We've been in the purple tier. We are still in the same phase. We have the waiver in place for our instruction. So what is the sentiment of the the teachers that are providing in-person at this point?
The teachers who are providing in-person at this point, they understand the quarantine. And they understand that it would serve to provide an additional layer of safety and security. They, a couple of them did say that they would they would be open to continuing during these two weeks with in-person support as they have been, and would be mindful of making sure to the extent possible that there is social distancing. and would be mindful of making sure to the extent possible that there is social distancing. However, if there were some other way of guaranteeing that the students' families were following the protocols of not traveling or having visitors who traveled. And even better, if there was some way of having the students tested so that they could be reassured, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Superintendent, can you go back to the dashboard, starting like November 1st, where the trend started? Can you clarify if fees, I guess the numbers, like, are they related? Are they from the same household? Are they working together in the same department? Are they from different schools? I'm, I'm just trying to see.
Yeah, we purposely do not put information like that on the dashboard because we do have to protect, by HIPAA laws, privacy. And so we, um, we don't have that on this dashboard. But I can tell you that there are two people who are in the same family. And that there are two cases where they happened within a day or two of each other at the same location.
Okay, thank you.
So Superintendent, let me confirm this. You mentioned that when Chris asked the, the teachers who's providing in-person learning, you know, how they feel of coming back, you said some of them are willing to go back to continue with the in-person learning. And I also hear that you recommend that the students will be tested if they choose to continue with the in-person learning.
Yes, that is one possibility.
Okay. So begin, uh, at the beginning, I guess Kavita and Gita asked to have the in-person learning continued. I, I would like to hear and to get confirmation from the parents of how do they feel if they would like to have their kids tested before continuing on with the in-person learning. Again, we have to be very mindful of the safety of everyone in the district. And if parents wish to have in-person learning continues, maybe they could reach out to the district to, to all of us to make sure that your recommendation, your suggestion is taken well with them.
Well, I want to join on that comment about the superintendent, I don't think it was a recommendation. It was a topic of this conversation. So I want to be thoughtful about where we're making recommendations or not. So I thank you for the idea of the, the parent, the parent input. I also want to ask about, you know, our teachers or I'll just say staff in general, they are the adults. They are the ones that may or may not have traveled as well as the parents of the students. Students go where parents go, but also are, so has there been any polling along with the district staff regarding if they have traveled outside of the area during the Thanksgiving weekend or had families come in? Or is that even permissible for us to, to ask those question?
I think it's permissible to ask those questions and no, I have not done any polling like that. Assistant Superintendent of HR, would that information be permissible to ask just if we did it anonymously?
I think we can ask it anonymously. I, I don't know if we would get the required numbers to give us, you know, in other words, would they be required to do it and answer? And then we'd also have to ask the question, how many of them receive visitors from outside of the area as well? It's both ways.
Okay, and, and so one of the ways that that may be answered is testing in, in a, in a reasonable time after a certain number of days possibly, because we are at, today is Monday, possibly a test or them testing in a couple of days will give an indication of whether or not they should be quarantining, because the other, the other side is that what if one of the in-person teachers or someone in person on campus brings COVID? And then now they may send it home with a child. You know, again, even though they talk about the child or adult transmission or the adult to child transmission is very low for a number of reasons, that we could be possibly sending something home. Cause I do know that we do have requirements of the, the teachers. Come back up. Could you briefly talk about the requirement that we have for the children that are actually coming to campus? What is, what do they have to do in order for us to accept them on campus?
The children who currently come on campus, eh, each morning, just as the same with team members. Each morning we have to complete a wellness inventory and for the children, their parents have to complete it in order for them to be on campus.
And, and any testing on the, what the, the health department requires is seven days from point of contact. You have to wait, because if you test too soon, you can get a false negative. And you want to wait that seven days from that point of contact.
I, I like to add on that. Thank you, Jonathan, you raised a good point. There is an issue of false negatives. And if you just look at the timeline of getting a test, you know, in between the time you get your nose swabbed and the time you get the test results, you know, if someone isn't quarantining, they might get infected before they get the results and then have that negative test and think they're okay when they're actually not. And between that, and there's also windows of asymptomatic transmission. So we, we really need to err on the side of caution and not think that a negative test is means all clear, because there are some cases where things can spread even with a negative test.
President Liang, we do have a hand raised by an attendee.
Can you let Charles in?
Okay, sure, uh, we're gonna have a public comment. It is Charles Schletzbaum. We're gonna enable your audio, Charles, and you're good to go.
Hey, well, you were talking about sort of anonymous surveys. Oh, that one of my staff or one of my coworkers gave a warm-up this morning saying, hey, how was your holiday? That was a warm-up activity. And over half of the warm-up activities came back, oh, we went over to our uncle, uncle or aunt's house and got together with family for Thanksgiving, or we went to San Diego for Thanksgiving. So that's like, now that's obviously not a scientific example, but that's just one class. And half the class literally destroyed the county guidelines. So, and that was just an informal one that nobody was really caring what their actual answer was. I don't know what's going to happen if we actually ask the parents on the, with the possibility of their kids not being able to come back.
I want to, I want to make sure I understand. You, you said about the possibility of the, the child coming back.
Well, in other words, if we had something like this, like we've got the county guidelines out there. But just like I said, it was a non-scientific thing, because it's like I said, a staff member I know gave a warm-up as part of their beginning of their class. It's like, how was your weekend? And literally, like I said, half of the responses were talking about how they got together with a large group of family or a large group of friends or traveled out of the city. That, that was my main point. So if that's going to happen, when the, we have these strict county guidelines going on right now, what's going to happen? Are they, are people really going to come clean before they send their kids back?
Yeah, no, Charles, you saying that in reference to the, the limited number of students that we have on campus now? Or you, are you projecting into the future?
These are, these aren't kids that I know of that are coming on campus now. I don't know if any, I don't think any of these kids are in the, the supervising pods. Like I said, it's just, this is what one of the staff members asked their class, like I said, as a warm-up, because we do a warm-up activity. And this was the response we got. And almost 50% of them were either got together in a large group of people outside of the county guidelines or traveled out to this out of state or to SoCal.
Thank you. So I want to make sure I don't derail President Liang's ask of the, the parent community and going back to the superintendent, the, the, the possibility of, of, of testing. And if you can restate that ask of the community, that will be, that will be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, for those parents who wants to have their child to continue with the in-person learning, are you willing to have these students or your child tested before going back to continuing on to the in-person learning?
I like that idea. If the parents want to have their child continue, we have to protect both sides, right? Not to see staff members getting tested, but the, the students who, like the older students at Mopetis High, and maybe the, the younger ones too. It sounds like a good idea to me.
I'm gonna go on, continuing on with the public comments, Alicia.
Okay, Alicia Vazal, your audio has been enabled and you can make your public comment.
Hi, I'm just calling, I'm a parent here at Mopetis High, High School and stuff. And I'm just listening to your guys' board meeting and stuff. And just as a parent and a member of the community that have, I've been here for a long time. Um, I, I've been listening and concerned not only about the numbers that are going up in the county, but also the ability for, for you guys to test adequately and do contact tracing. I understand that there's only a small amount of students and teachers that are at, that are at the schools and with social distancing protocols and stuff. I just don't, I just don't understand right now with the numbers and the cases rising in the county and the dashboard and stuff right now and the capacity of the beds and stuff, putting those families at risk for the sake of just saying, um, we're going to be just doing more testing and having parents, you know, sign the waiver or things like that. What you're really thinking about is thinking about your service providers that are putting their lives at danger, the nurses, everybody else, the essential workers and stuff. And letting them have a breather before you guys, you know, if you guys can do the, the distance learnings, as we all are equipped to do distance learning, you guys have done it in March, taking a breather so that the families of those people that are working so hard for all of these families that are dying unnecessarily, because people just don't adhere to the rules. I mean, as much as we want to say they're going to be adults or they're going to say we didn't travel, it's just like saying everybody's going to stop at a stop sign. We have rules and policies, but they might not follow it, right? And so one person that gets COVID and dies in the district might be just a little too much in the communities.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Alicia. We have another, uh, public comment. This one is Diana Orlando. We're gonna activate your audio. And you're good to go, Diana.
Board members and, um, E-CAB, Michelle and I are, I'm speaking for both of us with her knowledge, but we both feel that it's imperative that we shut down for these next two weeks, if not all three weeks. There is no reason to put anybody at risk. Asking teachers to continue volunteering to come in to teach students that, um, don't know how to social distance. The numbers like Alicia just said are going up. We are having more and more, every time we turn around, we're getting an email that we've had another case in the district. I do not understand why we would want to put people, the teacher, staff, admin, kids, especially our kids. Why do we need to put them at risk? The distance learning is working. Most teachers I talk to, talk to about it. It's working, the kids are being successful. If the county is calling for this, then why are we even questioning the county? I had at least 12 out of 23 kids go out of state or out of town farther than 100 miles. That's a scary thing if some of those kids were in those learning pods. So Michelle and I, on behalf of CSBA and MCA, urge you to close this down as far as in-person learning for at least the next two weeks, if not the last three weeks before winter break. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Diana. Did we want to go to the next one, President Liang?
Yes.
Okay. The next comes from Jacqueline Romero. We're enabling your audio and you're good to go with your public comment. You are muted right now, Jacqueline.
Thank you. Hello, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I'm looking at this as a parent. My kids are not in the pod or not in any of the special groups other than my son is in the athletic program for conditioning for soccer. This coach did not even blink an eye. He right away canceled all practices for the next two weeks. So that's what I would think that the district would do is, is to look at, you know, what the county is saying and doing what's best for the families involved. My son is heartbroken that this is happening because he's been doing his best to stay quarantined in his own space so that he doesn't bring anything to soccer practice. But at the same time, we understand that not everybody is doing the same thing. So for the reasons this is shared by Diana and other people, I think it's kind of self-explanatory that it should be shut down and let the teachers have a break and to reset and to go in there knowing that the kids have quarantined for 14 days. And hopefully, within the next 14 days, the kids haven't had any more contact or any contact. But on the other side of it, I look at this as a parent. If you're going to ask me to have my kid tested, I think that's an overreach, especially because my kid has been doing his part. So I don't think that's right, especially since there's other athletic groups that have been practicing and haven't been wearing masks and are still out there. So just looking at that, the big picture, I think it is an overreach to ask parents to test their, their children. And I see it this way, because you don't know what the insurance situation is with each family. And if you're talking to a family that's low income, something that may have had to go to the wayside because of unemployment or because of loss of job because of COVID is insurance. That needs to be considered. Who's going to pay for those tests if you're going to ask the kids to be doing those tests? Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. And we're gonna move on to the next public comment. It is RB. Can you please state your name for the record?
Hi, it's Rowena Barbosa. Hi, sorry, just used.
No worries, no worries.
So as a parent of one of the CBI hybrid students that are attending this school, I think I wanted to revert back to Board President Han Lin's question about whether or not I'd be comfortable as a parent to have my child tested. I think that if it's easily available and, and free for parents, I, I would do it for my child A, just because I want to make sure that she is safe. And B, if it, if we're asking this to be consistent amongst all the students. I, I question the validity of it. We've heard some comments around, you know, a lot of, uh, negative or false negatives. And I think if we do testing for it to continue, you got to get them tested regularly. Teachers and, and students in order for Teachers and students in order for safety to be measured. So I don't even really know if testing is the right measure to do. And then secondly, I'm hearing all these parents around, you know, their point of views. As a parent of a special needs child that where distance learning is hit or miss, again, I'm gonna just speak for myself and I know many of the parents that were already, you know, were asking for more time. We have successfully piloted this program since the summer and it's worked well. I'd like to see it continue. If we do any type of break for these kids, we're gonna regress them back. So please consider that they've been successful. I think the measures are safe. They've got Plexiglas in the classroom all over the place and there's only three students max at a time in these classes. And they're there no longer than really 60 minutes, if that, of concentrated time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your public comment and we're gonna move on to the next one. It is Kavida Sridhar. Your audio has been enabled and you are good to go.
Hi, and thank you, President Leanne and board members for addressing the special ed aspect of it. And I am in complete agreement with Rowena Barbosa. My child is in the CBI class. While we're okay with testing, she has been tested previously for a medical procedure. But, you know, again, the validity and testing has to be consistent. It has to be done. It's not like it's one and done. So again, it's a very small cohort. There's only three students or four students at the most. And the teacher is in the CBI classroom, is willing to come back in. And the teacher also is practicing social distancing and is also practicing all the safeguards that are necessary. And like Rowena mentioned, with special needs students, especially students with autism, structure and routine is exceptionally important. We pull them out for two weeks, send them back for one week. We're completely disrupting their entire routine. We successfully piloted this targeting, targeted in-person in the summer. And then even a break of two weeks was very hard for them to come back and, you know, adjust back. The kids are just adjusting back into the routine of academic rigor or even that, if you call it. And to actually pull them out again would be completely throwing them off. They could possibly regress and there's really not been IEP-based targeted in-person support that has happened thus far. So I would really urge you to please consider this while you're thinking about quarantining because there is no county requirement technically that our students cannot, this needs to be pulled away right away. So I would really urge you to please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you for reading.
And as of right now, there are no more public comments? Oh, we got a new one. We have a public comment from Lori Armino. Let's enable her audio and Lori, you can make your public comment.
Okay, hi, Board and Executive Cabinet, thanks. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, on behalf of administrators and sort of talk about what Diana and Michelle also said. And I do hear the parents, I know how important it is to have kids on campus. But just hearing about all of the families at my own site who traveled, who had large gatherings over this short vacation. In Charles Schlepp's mom said the same thing. You know, many are not following what we hope they would follow, right? It's that COVID fatigue for sure. And so I would rather err on the side of caution as well. We are getting lots of, you know, parents who are now knowing people who have COVID. I have staff members who now, you know, have roommates who have COVID or who have people in their lives who have COVID. So I just would really want to think about that. And then the last thing is just to think ahead too, to our two-week break and what ramifications that might have. I have many families who I know are leaving the country over that two-week break. And, you know, just, you know, this is kind of the last minute. We were thinking about what we need to do now for this break, but, you know, let's also think ahead about what we need to do for that break. Thanks.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, we have one more. Michelle Kessinger. Let's enable her audio and Michelle, you are good to go for your public comment.
Thank you, Board and Executive Cabinet, Michelle Kessinger, CSCA President. I just want to piggyback on what Diana said, Lori Armino said, that I, CSCA and myself agree that we should shut down for the two weeks. I think the question is, why not the three weeks? Can you explain that? I think that it's important that we take precautions. It's been stated at the county level. Dr. Cody is giving us guidance on how to, I just, I just read that, you know, we may be going into shelter in place because the intensive care beds are being filled up. And if the county cannot hold any more intensive care unit patients, then we will be going into further shutdown and shelter in place. That was from the governor. And we'll be hearing that in the next couple of days. I appreciate Cheryl Jordan, I appreciate you Superintendent, bringing this forward in a timely manner. It wasn't, you didn't blink an eye. As soon as we heard about the 14-day quarantine, you had said, you know, this, we need to talk about this. I appreciate our staff. I appreciate our board and the decisions that we all have to make together as a culture of we and our parents. And we all need to understand that it's gonna take all of us to do what needs to be done to make sure that we're all safe. So if that's what it takes by shutting down for two weeks into, through winter break, I think that we need to take a breath and just really pause and think about why we're doing this. And the reason is because we care about our community, our students and our staff. And I hope we make the right decision by making sure that we not only think about just two weeks, but the three weeks as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. We have one more, President Leanne, right now. Jessica Lee, we have a public comment. Your audio has been enabled. Take yourself off mute and you're good to make your public comment.
Hi, my name is Jessica. My son is at Melpita's High School. So I just wanted to make a comment about, so I hear that every parent, you know, we're all concerned about the safety and returning back to school and safety and keep everybody safe because my husband is a high risk. So, you know, we would be very cautious to return into in-person learning. But my child have a special need. And I know some of the people feel like the distant learning is working, but for my special need child, the distant learning is complete disaster. So I just wanted to kind of echo to Kavida, you know, Rowena, what they're concerned about. Their special need kids in CBI group cohort. I think when we were thinking about the, this group of child, that their disability, they don't take breaks, they don't have holidays. Their struggle continue. And so I think when, I would like the board to make decision to really consider what is the best interest for them and for the community and maybe come up with some kind of solution that will be best fit for everyone, but not kind of one size fits all solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Let's see. We do not have any more public comment at this time, President Leanne.
All right, thank you, Scott. Superintendent and board members, I think we heard enough from Diana Orlando, Michelle Kessinger, Lori Armino and all the parents. Yes, we, we have a situation that we have to be very careful in making decision. But my proposal right now to you, and we can discuss further, since Dr. Cody alarmed us of the rising cases in our county, also said with people traveling 150 miles plus in or out, would be quarantined for two weeks. We have heard from teachers saying that there are students, parents, traveling during this Thanksgiving vacation. And for the special needs students, parents, I do understand, I do know how difficult it is for a special need student to stay online, to stay focused. I would ask Superintendent Jordan, with the teachers, for those special ed students, we would have to do these two-week shutdown. But if the teachers can modify the way they teach or go extra, extra miles to help with these special needs students. But I don't feel safe and I don't feel okay for us to continue going back in-person learning. We should shut down for two weeks.
I would, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, it is definitely a very heavy balance to make because I know that those students do desperately need some in-person support. I also know that teacher is willing to provide it. And as you said, I would want to do what we can to safeguard that teacher and the students. I also, with the numbers of cases rising, I I think that as Diana mentioned, that it is important that we're having this conversation because the, Dr. Cody frankly did not say that the directive applies to schools. It's up to us to make that determination. And every day when we hear about students who are English learners or students who have very difficult home lives, and we heard at the beginning from Jackie about our students who have tenuous home situations because of lack of permanent housing. It makes it difficult to do a blanket yes for everybody to be on, be at home for three weeks. That's why I suggest we just follow the two-week quarantine so that there's at least that week before the break that for those teachers and team members who are still willing to provide in-person support for those students who really are most vulnerable, they can have that checkpoint. And then speaking to the special needs kids and that teacher, I think perhaps we may be able to work something out that provides an additional level of safeguard over what we have right now. And it is really, I think the pertinent part of this whole conversation is that it does take all of us, every single one of us, and that we do need our families to support our team members by doing their part in keeping their bubbles, not spending time with others outside of their social bubbles that they've created, and also not traveling unless there's some very deep extenuating circumstance over the holidays. And so I would like to see that for our teachers who are providing in-person support, that we do have a quarantine for two weeks because as Rowena pointed out, we do need, we, we would need to find some way to provide consistent testing. I think that's something we could perhaps pilot with the special needs students because there are only, I think about six of them. And then with the rest to do a quarantine. And think about, as President Norwood has mentioned, having a, I'm sorry, Vice President Norwood, having a safe ending to 2020.
There's one other piece, so thank you for that. And if I can echo, repeat what you said, you had said basically, you are, it is your recommendation for the board to consider the quarantine. So I want to, I want to change the language a little bit because, you know, when I hear things like shutdown or I hear things like close, I'm like, education is continuing. How we are continuing it is going to shift either temporarily or it's gonna continue to shift based on what's going on. We've, with COVID-19, we shifted from in-person learning to MUSD everywhere full-time. We, when the county changed its modeling for COVID, from the previous model to the tiered model, we went from, we went into phases. And we aligned our phases with the tiers. And so education continued, however, it has evolved or it has evolved based on the circumstances. We applied for the waiver, right at the same time we applied for the waiver, we moved into the orange tier and the orange tier allowed for limited in-person support of students. The dashboard that you've shared Superintendent Jordan is a reflection of how seriously we took that. And for those teachers who decided to do the on-campus, that they have been safe, they have been following protocols and it looks like from the data that the parents and students have also been adhering by getting the paperwork filled out. I am aware that there are, there have been some existences or experiences with staff not adhering to protocol in terms of always wearing their masks and social distancing. I will be the first to admit that Damon James called me out on it one time and I was like, oh my goodness, you're absolutely right. So I get it. I get exactly what's being said. I just want to make sure that as we continue to have these conversations, we continue to find common language around what we're being asked to do or we're recommending. We're recommending to, for 14 days for the majority of the district to go back to 100% distance learning. And which, if that is what board agrees upon, then we have to ask ourselves, what will be the notification time for the parents or the parents that have kids that are coming to campus? Because maybe some have gone back to work because they're utilizing the distance learning. And to tell them today that tomorrow we're going to stop, that's, I understand it's very abrupt. Dr. Cody made, said on Saturday, she said for Monday. So we should also consider what would be the timeline that we would love to implement what we are recommending here moving forward for families. So I would ask that also be considered in the conversation. Thank you, Rowena and everyone else we talked about and Jackie for talking about, you know, some folks may not be able to afford testing. So free testing is something that we've got to be able to figure out or to the best of our ability moving forward. So thank you for sharing those things and I yield the rest of the time.
Thank you, and thank you for correcting the two-week shutdown and replace with 14 days quarantine. Yes, it sounds much better.
Well, I think Vice President Chris Norwood hit in the head in the sense of just hearing all these comments from, you know, our staff and parents in the community. You get a sense of where they're at in their knowledge of everything, you know. Even someone once made it sound like we're trying to reopen the school for everybody. We're not, we're, you know, to reiterate, we're talking about the small group instruction, the targeted instruction for the folks, students who are struggling with distance learning. And in that part about it, you know, we were able to offer that because we were progressing as a county and as a city to and as a city to, you know, the different tiers moving along. We talked about this back in the summer where during the winter time, if we take a step back like we did in the, into the purple tier because of the rising cases that we need to take into consideration what steps we will do to limit or prevent the spread for going further. And I think the, the fact that the education does not stop. Yes, in person, and this is what we're talking about, we're taking a step back temporarily because the, the, the order of the, the two week quarantine period. Now, it's interesting. Is it a suggestion? Is it an order? The enforcement is really what we're talking about. You know, there is no necessary enforcement out there. The countries that are successful is because they're actively enforcing their protocols. Now, we're really asking the community to really consider this, right? What we're suggesting as far as the safety of everyone i- in light of not having all available testing to, to everyone. And you know, there is testing, but it's not, try to get an appointment today, right? Or tomorrow. It's, it's, it's going to be very difficult for folks to, to immediately test and wait for all the results. So when we think about what's the most cautious approach to continue learning, I, I believe the two week, you know, quarantine period with particular steps for families to, to, you know, understand how they can get back to in-person, you know, the fact that we're asking them, hey, have your student tested for a few days and, and that way you, you can let, you know, everyone else know that you know, from a staff perspective, your student and your family is, is, you know, hasn't tested positive. So you, you, you build a little safety net. Now, I understand some false positive testing, but that's where one test is not enough, right? We're talking about consistent testing to build a level of comfortability before we get back to, to in-person instruction, instruction, excuse me. So there's a lot to it. I would just suggest that build out a timeline as well for families to, to, you know, follow through and, and that way they can get comfortable with coming back in person.
Any other discussions, comments from the board members?
Um, I noticed that we have a number of additional leaders in the audience and I'm curious.
Yes, I want to hear from there's Cavita. Since Cavita had shared the information, let's give the time now to Juliana first.
Okay, so you wanted the next public comment from Juliana Brahim.
Yes, and if we have time, we'll go back to Cavita.
And then we also have one other one as well. Juliana, your audio is enabled. Please go ahead with your public comment.
Good evening, everybody. And again, I also want to appreciate the board having this conversation that's very important. Since October, I have been in charge of one of the learning pods at Calhills where we have approximately 25 students in two different pods. I believe that the kids are having a lot of support from our proctors and also the substitutes paraeducators. And it's very important that as we continue to support them and support the families, we also give them what I'm hearing very clearly, a, a break, a refresh, a reset. And also consider the guidelines of the county. Having said that, it's also very important, as Chris Norwood has mentioned, that we give our families some time to find out next, uh, next steps for how will they be taking their kids for the next two weeks. Many of the families might have some options, many of the families might not. So in my particular case, I would like to give our families at the learning pods at least one more day to try and figure out the accommodations that they might need. And go for the two weeks closure that will give everybody a reset and a safe time to refresh and stay connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliana.
There's one thing I gotta jump in. I keep hearing, you know, refresh. It is extremely difficult for our teachers to do distance learning. They are working from home or in their classrooms, the teaching studio. Their natural inclination has been in person. When we talk about this two weeks being a refresh or a break, it's a transition to having to go back to a way of working that is 100% virtual, which is not anybody's comfort zone. So I, I just gotta be, I normally be, I'm, I'm being a little bit particular in this language, but we have to work towards developing our common language together to understand exactly what's going on and what we're doing. This is not a break for the teachers or refresh. They are transitioning from possibly in-person. For those that are doing in-person to distance learning and the, the teachers that are using the classroom as teaching studios already in isolation. If they, and I haven't heard us talk about that part as a part of this conversation. So I, I look forward to the additional comment.
Scott, would you let Nola speak? And then I would like to invite Principal Rojas and Dr. Lopez to share their thoughts with us as well.
Okay, we will go to Nolan Calara. You are next up for public comment. We're enabling your audio. Take yourself off mute and you can give your public comment.
Oh, hi. Good evening. I'm the mother. I was, I'm currently working in a, one of the government hospitals. And we've been seeing patients. Most of them are teenagers and sad to say, some of our patients are, were getting a result of positive. But they have, they are asymptomatic. That's why I'm kind of like not comfortable sending back my kids to school because mostly we're now in a rise of the COVID-19 and I'd rather wait until the numbers of COVID-19 subside, maybe around after holidays and then let's see what will happen again. And then for the children who have special needs, we should be able to track down the numbers of those kids in each, in each school. And then maybe if, like for example, if, if one public school has only five special needs students in a certain public school, then maybe, maybe we could consider that one to come back to school for special needs assistance from the teachers in order to, to accommodate whatever they need to the schools. So that's all I could say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and
Principal Rojas, are you online? And Dr. Jerry Lopez?
Uh, we have Dr. Jerry Lopez. His hand is raised and we go to him. We're gonna enable his audio and Jerry, you're good to go.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for this important conversation. I can let you all know that we have been carrying out in-person classes, four sessions for over 50 students at the Child Development Center at Rose. It's an incredible and dedicated group of ladies that I work with. It's an, it's a great pleasure and an honor to work with them. They are so very dedicated. They've been going at this since June 8th. And if you hear my voice cracking, it's just because of the emotion that I feel. And at this point in this time of increased numbers, hospitalizations. And the fact that I have two family members right now suffering the effects of COVID, one of them in ICU. That I have teachers, I have paraprofessionals, I have office staff that have put themselves in harm's way. They, some of them, many of them have factors that put them at risk. And yet they come in every day. I cannot possibly ask them to, to come in at this point. And I gotta tell you, if I were to ask them, they would come in and take care of the children. But I, it's not even a time, I mean, it's a time of refreshing, but for us, it is a time of I need to be humane to my staff and I need to really honor what they have provided so far for the last six months. But at this time, we need you to help us by, by going with this, this time off. This, this time of quarantine, we really do need to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Move to the next person. I just wanna again reiterate, Jerry, when you said the time off. They're not really off because they'll still be providing distance learning rather than in-person.
Let's hear from Principal Rojas.
Okay, Principal Rojas, we're gonna enable you. You're good to go.
Oh, good evening, MHUSD Board and Executive Cabinet. I think this is a really hard decision that is presented to our school board and I, I hear all sides of it. As you have heard from several of our parents at MHS, particularly our parents in, of the students in our CBI in-person support cohort. I would say that is the group of students that I am most worried about, the disruption to learning and regression in, in what they've gained over the last three months of in-person support that they've had. This group of students has been the most, I, I would say, distance learning does not work for them. And we are trying to think outside of the box, collaborating with the parents and the teachers about how to improve that for semester two. It's a really small group. It's six to eight students, spread out into two groups of three or four. And the, the interactions are limited to, at max 75 minutes. And so that is the group that I am most concerned about. Around disruption to learning. The second group that I have shared with my concern about around learning is the students who we support at the Learning Hub at SJCC Extension. Several of the students who are there are there because of challenges with access to internet and a healthy place to learn. Considering that we are nearing finals week. A two, a fourteen day quarantine would drop those students out of any support that they have right into final exams. And several of those students that participate there are, are already at risk of not passing their classes. With all that being said, safety does come first. Learning won't happen if students are unhealthy and if teachers and staff are unhealthy. I, I, I've heard the idea tossed around in discussion around, maybe it's not a one size fits all approach. Maybe we figure out some sort of way to continue the CBI learning pods for the small group, especially if the staff are willing to to continue. But I, I, I ultimately think it's, it's, it's a hard decision. I, I can't, I guess all I can do is reiterate the the, the, the different perspectives that we've already heard.
Thank you, Principal Rojas. And we'll take the last question, last public comments from Cavita.
Okay, we're gonna enable your audio and then you should be good to go. Take yourself off mute. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for that comment, Principal Rojas. And we all understand that we all need to be safe and we are also I hope you understand that we're not insisting upon our kids coming back to learning, putting them at risk of contracting COVID or passing it on to somebody else purely because our kids cannot express what they are going through. What we are concerned about is the disruption to their learning. And on behalf of some special parents, that special education parents, I do wanna reiterate that some of them who haven't been able to talk on this particular call that we're willing to do whatever it takes to make sure our children are progressing and not regressing. And one of the most important things to note is what Superintendent Jordan also mentioned was that it's not a directive that directed specifically to have these students pulled out. We're not asking for a lot. There's just a very small group of students who need this support. If we can please not come up with just a one size fits all, everybody is going to go into full distance learning because it hasn't worked for many of our children. And we definitely, if the governor has made exceptions for students who have exceptional needs that targeted in-person support can continue for these students regardless of the fear that our county is in. So please do consider that. And like Principal Rojas said, if there are some students who are the vulnerable students, please provide them. If the teachers are willing, if the staff is willing to support to learn in whatever way works best for them. And that's all I wanted to share. And thank you so much for all the deliberations and thank you teachers for all the support and the service.
Thank you. All right. We need to wrap this meeting up. Superintendent Jordan.
So this is not an action item, however, the board can provide direction for for me, staff to take. So seeking direction on moving towards quarantine for students who are on campus for distance learning support. And with the exception of figuring out something, providing staff is willing for those in the highest needs exceptional class that Principal Rojas talked about. And in regards to those teachers who are using their classrooms as learning studios without any students in them. Because they have all of their equipment set up there already and they can go directly to their class. They should be able to isolate.
So my, my previous proposal to you was to have 14 days quarantine. And if you would reach out or the parents would reach out to the teachers and if the teachers are willing to provide those extra miles to the students.
Yeah, I think you said it a little bit differently, President Liang. I think what was, what was said was along the lines, I think the Superintendent Jordan phrased it in a slightly different way, but captures the spirit of what you're talking about. There are the highest need students that we may be able to find, or we may be able to locate support for teachers abusing the, the spaces for their teaching studios and and limiting or eliminating all contact with the additional staff. I think Superintendent, can you, I'm not doing a great job of the rephrasing, but if you could kind of recapsulate that for us, that'd be great.
So the direction is for those students whose teachers are providing in-person support. It will ask them to quarantine for two weeks. And then for our exceptional need students who are currently doing an in-person learning support. If the staff is willing and if we take some additional precautions, i.e. having the students tested as well as team members, then we continue with that one.
So if there are no staff that's willing to go back in person teaching, then it is off, correct?
Yes, currently we are in the mode where those team members who are willing to the mode where those team members who are willing to provide in-person support, they may do so. We are not in a point where we have directed teachers to come in to provide in-person support. And for several groups of students, such as the Learning Pods that Principal Brahim described, those are adult school teachers who are providing that support for the Learning Pods. And the Learning Pods, for the most part, those are parents who are essential workers, and they need to have their children in childcare.
Okay, then that's the direction.
Superintendent Jordan, you mentioned testing for students. And are we in position with, I know that that might be a future thing. Are we in position to support providing that? Or are you referencing, can you talk a little bit about that part?
Sure, no, we are not yet in the space where we can provide it ourselves. However, I'm pretty sure that for six to eight students and one to three staff members, we should be able to find within the city.
Okay.
There was another issue that Principal Rojas brought up in regards to, like, the Learning Pod. Students are coming there because they don't have access. Now, are we gonna be able to supply hotspots or further devices or needs? Finding out the needs of those students to be able to do distance learning within this two-week quarantine period?
Yes, they do, they are able to do their distance learning. They're here on Mondays and Fridays and Tuesday through Thursday, they're at home doing their distance learning. And what we'll do to support them, they're the secondary students we're talking about, is Ms. Scott, who is our leader in that regard, said that they will provide virtual tutoring and connection with the students. That's one thing that Calvers Hills High School staff, when I asked them what they're doing that's working so well, because they only have about ten to fifteen kids who are failing, they felt that their ability to stay in real-time contact with students through a Google app that allows chat via their personal phones. And that's something I think that Ms. Scott was referring to that they would do for the students in the Learning Labs.
I'd like to add that, and this is for the board's information, the issue of access is not just devices and hotspots. It's actually, in some instances, the living facilities upon which they're being expected to learn. So sometimes, it's not just giving them with advice or giving them a hotspot, there's more to it, and there's some complications. So when we hear about folks that don't have access, it just doesn't mean equipment. There are some other extenuating circumstances that I can share at a later point, with some folks.
Okay, so Superintendent, we're clear on the direction. Okay, I'd like to give.
When is the notification? So what was the, when was with the notification of that we're gonna move in this direction? So in the event that some of the parents who may be looking for it, because there is this disconnected language sometimes that when, when parents hear certain things from the school, they may not have a clear understanding of it. So how are we gonna ensure that the message is communicated correctly and effectively? So everybody has an understanding of what's actually going on?
So what Dr. Lopez has done is his staff has called all of the parents personally. What Ms. Scott did is she emailed all of the parents. And Ms. Barbara Heem, she will call the parents. And then for the individual teachers, they, they'll talk with their, with their families, with their parents. And then from a district level, I'll ask Scott to work with me to create a message to all parents about the need to be very mindful about traveling as we have the winter holidays coming up. And that if we are in the same situation and we don't have something else to mitigate, such as testing, that they could expect to have automatic quarantine for everybody when they return in January.
All right, I would like to give our student rep, Amy Stanley, her last comment.
I wanted to add on to what everyone was saying, yeah, this is a really difficult decision to make. We have to consider the situation for different circumstances. I personally value the safety of students and staff as well as family members at home because I know we have talked about the topic of false negatives and false positives. And the fact that, once you get tested, there is a timeframe where you do have the chance to get COVID after that. And just putting the risk of the students and staff is, I personally would not be in favor of that. And adding on to what Mr. Schlesbaum was saying, there are students who are not following protocol. And we would want to make sure that our MEOC community is staying safe, staying safe. I did hear the perspective of the community, like the people who spoke about on behalf of the special needs community and people who do have access. I think what we can do, one thing that I would like propose is we would shift to the virtual learning for the two weeks, but we also need to make sure, adding on to what Mrs. Jordan says, we need to make sure that the community of special needs, those students have the materials and are given the access to whatever they need in that timeframe, as well as the situation that Mr. Norwood spoke about. It's not only the technology, there are the facilities that is needed. So it's really hard for me to take a stance on this situation because there's so many things to consider. But I would really, from my heart, I think safety is something that needs to be valued. And even if one person is affected, it can be disastrous, and that's where my stance is right now.
Thank you, Amy, for sharing that. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Well, my final comment is, thank you Superintendent Jordan for bringing this together and bringing so many stakeholders together. Since the conversation, we, you are clearly identifying the fact that while there are a lot of things going on around us, we have to make the decisions that are best for MoPetus Unified School District, taking into account where we are, where we've been, and where we wanna go. I appreciate the dashboard, I look forward to, if there's a possibility of us having it in multiple languages, for folks to be aware of what's going on and then continuing to work together to figure out all this testing stuff. Because obviously, those are gonna play a factor over the next six months or so, regardless if there's vaccine or not, we're just gonna have to, those are two things that are gonna be needed. We have to work together and figure out.
Yes, and thank you, thanks to all the community members, the teachers, the principals, the staff and board members for attending this meeting tonight. It was such a short notice, and yet we have everybody's joining in today, just because we all care for the safety of our students and our families in MoPetus. So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Okay, men second, all in favor?